And also, the applicant suggested that this is a good sign. It's out of sight, out of mind, and I wouldn't disagree with that. You can't really see it, but C2 has to be C2, whether it's on Broadway or wherever we put it, for it to be consistent. And so, again, the paving and all the things that go with it are requirements, even if it goes in this location. Otherwise, variances would need to be granted, and I think probably at least four variances, the way I was looking at it, would be required. So, this is a finding of fact that talks about the floodplain and the use being industrial and whatnot, and the findings of fact continue. Give you a chance to read through there. I don't want to read it all, there's a lot of stuff there. You can see towards the bottom that all open storage has to be paved, landscaping is required, there has to be fence, and so those are the issues with this. Recommendation is to deny the rezoning request for the following reasons: It's an industrial use type, not commercial. Site's a hundred-year floodplain. There's no other commercial zoning that abuts it. The parcel to the south is changing from C2 to RA. The other parcels are ag or residential. Complan shows a conceptual greenway, and the roads are unimproved that are leading to it. So, that's the summary of the staff's position with this. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Lang?
No questions.
Sure.
So, without Lot 5 going from C2 to RA, and the request would make this a C2, that will be a kind of a spot zoning, which is something that the city's been trying to stay away from for years.
Right. That's where the applicant was originally thinking, "Well, I got C2 to the south of me, so it won't be spot zoning." And then, just real recently after that, the neighbor came in and requested the rezoning to have the C2 go away, and I think it's really not a viable place for commercial development down in the floodplain. And so, staff supported the rezoning to away from C2 to RA, in this case as opposed to C2 zoning.
Any other questions for Mr. Lang? Welcome to public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak on behalf of this application?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm going to start with apologizing. I'm a small business owner. I'm not an experienced public speaker, so I'm sure I'll stumble through, but hopefully you'll bear with me and I'll get my points across. I do not believe it was ever the spirit and intention of zoning to deem someone's property worthless if there's a reasonable and viable alternative. Committees such as this planning commission exist because of the need for a body of individuals able to recognize that you cannot write a one-size-fits-all ordinance that will apply justly and sensibly over the entire community with only a handful of zoning distinctions. Regardless of the best efforts, life beyond maps and documents tells us that which applies downtown or in the heart of Broadway is going to differ from that along a river bottom out in the two-mile extraterritorial zone. Therefore, this commission has the responsibility of applying logic and common sense to answer the question, "What is reasonable and right in this instance?" I have to address the staff recommendation. It's my feeling that this document contains a significant number of errors, and if you want, you can look through what I've handed you. Under project description, any talk of a future FEMA-revised map is at this point speculative as it could still change at any time. The claim that we are requesting commercial use but the actual intended use is industrial is, in my feeling, incorrect. From this point, it goes to discuss industrial zoning, which is not being requested and is not the proper zoning for this requested use. Toward the bottom of Page 3, it says that the applicant has stated he would intend to apply for multiple variances to avoid meeting the developmental standards required by this ordinance. This is also inaccurate and will be addressed hereafter. Under finding of facts, we feel that Number 3 is irrelevant and will be addressed hereafter. We feel Number 4 is incorrect, that Number 6 is not a fact at this time, rather it's an assumption based on an undetermined outcome. Number 7, we feel is incorrect, Number 8 is incorrect, and Number 9, we feel is incorrect. Under Number 9, it talks about several variances to be requested when in reality we are seeking two. Under Item B, an open storage lot is not the accurate description for the requested use, which we will address hereafter. Although we did offer the chain-linked fence, at no time did we imply to refuse to other types of fencing. D is also not accurate. Our landscaping plan, which includes a 50-foot-wide tree barrier to the west end, was, to my knowledge, compliant, but we had no time suggested not being open to corrections if they're necessary to become compliant. This next section is titled Staff Recommendations and Conditions If Approved. Yet there is nothing in this section that addresses staff recommendations or conditions if approved. It is simply a repeat of inaccurate talking points stated in this document. Under supplemental information, Item 6 claims we would require at least four variances. Again, not accurate. Number 8, regarding landscaping, again, not accurate. Number 10 addresses signage. We did attend two DRT meetings. No signage intended, none was requested, and it was never discussed. Number 11, drainage plan was requested as there was no plan for development. Under the current zoning and land use in relationship to the comprehensive plan, once again, the claim that the use is industrial and not commercial is inaccurate. Also, an argument can be made that the requested use is more in line with the conceptual greenway than R1 residential in that there's no structural development planned. To leave it zoned R1 could result in the destruction of home-and-out buildings, creating structures at risk of loss and creating obstructions should our river rise again, whereas with our proposed use, any container stored there could be easily moved to a safe location quickly. Under the engineering and public works considerations, it claims the existing road is not adequate for commercial zoning. I received this document Thursday morning and promptly visited the city engineer's office seeking documentation, but at that time was only able to make my request to the receptionist. I called again Friday and then again today to request engineering reports, test results, or whatever documentation was used to make this determination that the road was inadequate. Mr. Myers did try to return my calls four hours ago before this meeting. Unfortunately, I was working and unable to answer, so as of yet, I have not seen the information. But the point being is it's not enough to simply claim the road is inadequate. However, the question, excuse me, it's painfully clear to the drafters that this document did not want this request approved. However, the question still remains, is that in line with the historical precedence and the wording of the ordinance as written? Throughout this process, one of my concerns has been that so much seems left up to personal opinion, subjective interpretation, and dismissive decisions of convenience. The first question regarding this request is, does the property fit in C2 zoning based upon its location and intended use? Regarding the physical location, we can look directly at the ordinance as written. Section 11-2, general description. In the general description, it states the parcels within the district should be developed either within other commercial spheres adjacent to arterial traffic routes or a well-buffeted area adjacent to major streets. I do not believe any reasonable person could claim this location is anything less than a well-buffeted area, and as such, it does meet the criteria for C2 zoning as clearly described in the general description of the city ordinance. Secondly, adjacent to major streets. In the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2 is dedicated to definitions. The word "but" is defined as to physically touch or border upon or share a common property line. Please notice that when writing the general description, the word "but" was not used, rather the word "adjacent" was used. The city, however, does not define adjacent in its listed definitions. So, we turn to Merriam-Webster, that says adjacent can be defined as nearby, not far. Sorry, lost my place. The distance of this property to the public right-of-way of the 83 bypass is approximately 710 feet and 1,100 feet to the actual bypass. On the next page, you will find a list of properties around Minnetonka that are Zone C2, that are a distance similar to or much further from a major street. And it should be noted that in most of these examples, the nearest pavement was considered the nearest major street. In many instances, it could be argued that the nearest pavement was still not a major street, making these distances in some cases much further. I won't bother to read each one of them to you, but if you look through them, I'm sure there will be places there you recognize. This shows the property should be considered adjacent based on the rights enjoyed by other property owners. Because the use of a private parking area as requested is not directly addressed in the city's ordinance, the words "or similar" are the defining characteristics. Based on similar permitted uses such as parking structures, commercial parking lots, lumberyards, essential service structures, public parking structures, along with other uses of similar nature or general characteristics that are listed as being among those specifically permitted in the district, the requested use does fit within the heading of "or similar." To support this, the next page is a list of 31 existing properties in Minnetonka Zone C2 with similar uses or at the very least, far more industrial uses than what is being proposed on this property. Please pay special attention to 7, 8, 9, and 10, as all four of these locations currently handle the storage of roll-off containers. To allow those property owners but deny us would be to deny us a right currently enjoyed by other property owners, which has been referred to in the city's documents as a fundamental unfairness to the property owner. And again, 31 places, I won't go through them all, but I think you will recognize several if you look through there. Although we have never suggested we oppose a different but reasonable type of fencing if that is required to meet the ordinance standards, it must be mentioned that literally every single one of these properties listed is contained by a chain-linked fence or no fence at all. Regarding the two requested variances, we have requested a variance from the requirement of any building or structure and from the requirement of paving a parking area. On the city's variance application under granting of variances, Item 3 talks about other extraordinary or exceptional situations or conditions of a specific piece of property that the strict application of any provision of this ordinance would result in, and they list three examples of extraordinary or exceptional situations or conditions as being. One, exceptional practical difficulties. This applies in that the requirement of a building could create an obstruction to the floodplain when or should that floodplain go into effect, and it would be an unnecessary and unwanted structure that could be extremely difficult to insure in the future. Number two, unreasonable hardship. I feel this speaks directly to the floodplain and to the conceptual greenway as being due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner that would otherwise allow for reasonable use of the property and causing a fundamental unfairness to the owner of such property. This would also speak to the requirement of paving a parking area in that due to the property's location and speculative future land use plan, pavement would require an unrealistic investment many times the value of the property that could never be recoupable by means of an increased property value. But most glaringly is the third, the denial to a property owner similar property rights enjoyed by other property owners in the neighborhood. The following is a list of properties within 2,000 feet that are Zone C2, that are without a structure, or that have a gravel parking lot, or a combination of both, which clearly demonstrates the requested use is in fact a use enjoyed by other neighboring property These are by no means comprehensive lists, but they should be enough to show that to deny this rezoning request, at the very least, would be a denial of a property owner the rights currently enjoyed by other property owners causing a fundamental unfairness to that owner as it is described in the city's own documents. At the end of this day, should this zoning request be denied, the property will remain an empty lot with little to no value to me or to any future prospective buyer should I feel the need to sell it, or to the city or county as it will become nearly worthless and therefore have an extremely low property tax value. Should this zoning request be approved, the property still remains an empty lot but properly fenced and with the necessary landscaping, and the improvements would recreate no significant restriction of flow should our river rise again, and would be a usable property with real value, not only to me, but it would carry a commercial taxable value benefiting the area. It's my hope that this committee will see that proving this request is not only the legal thing to do, but it's the right thing to do in allowing the property to have a value and a usefulness. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions? Maybe hang tight. Would anybody else like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Mark Larson. Along with my wife Nancy Bjork and a partnership called Cut &amp; Loose Partners, which is a partnership that Nancy and I have, we've got a horse facility out there, and in days gone by when I had more of my compatriots here, where they used to tease me and say it was the Larson compound out there. So, I did rezone that one-piece Outlot 5 because it made the most sense when we bought it. I thought that's what it should be, frankly, and I think this pointer works. But if you see Outlot 5, does that do anything?
I've changed it here. What do you have?
What am I supposed to do? I can go up to the screen, but anyway, Outlot 5, as we told you and as you know from our last committee meeting, is just going to be pasture.
Go ahead.
That work? No, thank you. So, this is Outlot 5, right? What I wanted, a couple of things I wanted to tell you, and there are a couple of members of the Beam family here who know this better than I, but that little squiggly line is an easement that goes into the Flying J Truck Stop. That easement benefits certain members of the Beam family so that they can cross Outlot 5 and then exit into the Beam Truck Stop. That easement is very specific and says that if it's ever used for anything other than residential personal vehicles, it's voided. So, there's a danger to that family that if anything happens, that they'll lose their easement to get into some of their outlining properties. Another concern I have that's initially, and I presented it to Mr. Lang, is right in this area. The applicant has already started digging, cut a ditch there, and tore out right along our property line without leaving a lateral sidewall, so it's an immediate drop-off with no leveling across it. It sort of demonstrates to me an attitude. That being said, I don't think this property will be of any greater value with a bunch of fencing on it, and I don't know what his plan is as far as any kind of surfacing, if it's gravel or whatever. There's going to be no increase in value to make this a commercial use. Essentially, this area is a residential farm area. There are two members of the Beam family that live out there, too, will talk about what's going on here. I would encourage you not to change the zoning on this property, and I guess the converse of who's got C2 and who doesn't have C2 is also here. My thoughts when I bought the property was that the C2 that we had didn't make a lot of sense in there because the other zoning was also more residential-type zoning, and that's why I felt the committee would look favorably on rezoning Outlot 5, which you did and which the council did. So, I would discourage this piece of property becoming essentially, well, it's going to be unsightly in an area that's sort of pristine to many of us that are out there. I don't think this fits well with the rest of the neighborhood, and I would encourage you to vote in compliance with Mr. Lang's wishes. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? Seeing none. Would anybody else like to speak either in favor or in opposition?
My name is Roger Beam. I am a reasonable retired teacher now, and I live back there as well. My concern, I do protest the rezoning that's C, commercial. The reason is that road is soft. You're talking about handling heavy traffic. It is a soft road, even if you're taking a pickup or a car after rain, it is difficult to get through, and the increased traffic would make it even worse. I believe if it was zoned commercial, it'd be increased property taxes as well. When my brother sold that trailer to Flying J, they raised my property taxes by 160 percent, 160 percent, and I live in a mobile home. And it's a situation that I would be concerned about that as well. I have lived out there since 1970, excuse me, 1990, and my father gave me that property in 1970. I lived out there in 1970. I actually grew up there where the Beam Truck Stop is, so I know that area very well, as Mr. Larson would say, because I grew up there. So, I know that the island was originally part of my father's Beam farm, and that's where that is. Again, I am concerned about the heavy traffic. I am concerned about the breaking up of the roads, and also, I am concerned about the increased valuation of my property as well. And if you have any questions, I may...
Any questions, Commissioners? Okay, not at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this agenda item?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Todd Beam. I've lived out there 98% of my life. I have a house that I drive on that road to get back to. I call, everybody does not even, a lot of people do not even know it's back there. I call it a little secret hiding spot, and everybody knows how beautiful it is, and with dumpsters being there and garbage, even with the fencing and the smell, it would be very unsightly. I have two sons that live with me back there, along with my uncle Roger and along with my neighbor Mark Larson. I'm back on 3804. You saw it earlier, but where the red line is, kind of back in that area, it doesn't matter. It's a beautiful place. We do not need a garbage landfill there because no matter what, it, Mark will not, there's going to be garbage everywhere, even with the fence and everything. That section line that he is proposing that the road is going to be on, I put that road in myself after the flood. I spent $3,000 on it, and it is such a beautiful area. I even took a picture of it, and I have this hanging in my house. Show the audience. What Mark is proposing or is where, this is where all the dumpsters are going to go. He already cut down three or four trees, so with the tree row and the garbage being back there, all I can see is a bunch of dumpsters and garbage. My son and I, and, well, both of my sons and I bow hunt back there, deer and turkey, and if he proposes it's not going to be worth anything, well, maybe he should have went to the city before he bought the land and developed it. Kind of makes more sense to do that instead of asking favors after the fact. If he's willing to sell it cheap, I would love to buy it cheap because that's the way I want to keep it, is beautiful, pristine land that I can enjoy and my sons can enjoy for years to come and generations to come. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? I do have one quick question. So, the road that goes north and south, is that a private road? Is that your road, or is that a public street?
It's a section line.
It's a section line.
But I churn in.
That's a private.
Oh, north and south, yes, that's private. Sorry. Excuse me, yeah, that's private.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Can you sign in for us there in that paper?
Oh, yes.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay. Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak either in favor or in opposition or any rebuttal?
Regarding these concerns, we've been at our current redded location for three years, which is just off the 252 bypass. The property abuts a parking lot with a series of apartment buildings. In that time, we've never had a single complaint regarding noise, odor, dust, traffic, blowing trash, or anything else. The requested use is completely unrelated to public concerns regarding landfills or recycling centers. As the pictures demonstrated, we're just looking to park steel containers. There are not any garbage there. In regard to landscaping and drainage, the leveling of the property, which I owned and did call to make sure that I wasn't doing anything that wasn't permitted, the leveling of the property follows the natural contour of the land but includes a relief cut at the eastern end of the property to allow drainage into the dead loop, which would be the natural location for rain or surface water to seep or flow. This was done in the interest of being neighborly, to direct any excess water away from the road ditch and to avoid water standing or puddling on or near the neighbor's property, which is Mr. Larson. This would be an easy, quick fix, and that I am completely open to should the commission or the neighboring property owner prefer this redesigned or filled back into its original level, but there's been no communication with me regarding this being a concern or a problem. As far as the roadway, there seems to be a fear or misconception that our presence is going to equate to heavily loaded trucks and multiple trips daily to and from the property. As a general rule, we operate five days a week and seldom visit our storage facility more than two or three times a day. But to alleviate these weight concerns, I provided a scale ticket copy to you from our heaviest truck carrying our heaviest container, which shows an empty weight of 35,920 pounds, which is less than 11,975 pounds per axle. During the city's spring thaw, when the city's weight restrictions are at their most critical, one of the lowest weight restrictions commonly used on some of our most vulnerable streets is six tons or 12,000 pounds per axle. This means that our heaviest truck and heaviest container would be legal even at that most restrictive time. Please keep in mind... Please keep in mind that there's nothing in this request to allow anything but the storage of empty containers, and not the storage of loaded containers or any type of debris. Also, for comparison, the following is a list of trucks and equipment and their approximate weights that travel these types of roads on a regular basis. The rear loader garbage trucks, thirty-six to forty thousand pounds empty, forty-five to sixty-five thousand pounds loaded. A Caterpillar one forty H road grader, which is commonly used, or that type of machine at least, for, for maintenance on these sorts of roads, on the county roads, has a, has a operating weight of forty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-two pounds. Type D school bus, loaded, depending on seating capacity, is twenty-five to thirty-six thousand pounds. A propane delivery truck, a septic pumping truck, a fueloid delivering truck, they range between twenty-eight and thirty-six thousand pounds loaded. Please note, single axle trucks split the total weight over two axles instead of over three, making them much heavier per axle than a tandem axle trucks, which splits the weight over three axles, and tandem trucks are all we operate. This clearly demonstrates that our equipment is of no significant threat to this roadway. But ultimately, and especially regarding the pavement, according to the North Dakota State University Ag Law and Management website, and I quote, "A property owner making improvements on any section line or other public roadway does so with the full weight and knowledge that it is still a public right of way." In other words, unless there's a weight restriction posted, all trucks have every right to travel on this public roadway regardless of the property zoning in the area. As I stated in the beginning, this commission has the responsibility of applying logic and common sense here to answer the question, what is reasonable and right in this instance? Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Last chance, would anybody else like to speak on behalf of this item?
My name again is Roger Beam. I'm a reasonable retired teacher. I prefer to live in an area where it's quiet, the traffic is down, and I don't have to deal with commercial traffic. You may have a septic tank or a pump come out there once every two years, maybe a garbage truck that brings the Flying J pave track. But the situation on that gravel road, again, is a soft road and can be broken up very easily by a heavier truck. Even a car gets very bogged down. I'll try to be as brief with that answer as I can be. But my concern is traffic and higher taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Sure. Mr. Beam?
Yes.
Could you approach?
I'm sorry.
Yep, that's fine.
Just a quick question. Your comment about avoiding commercial traffic and everything, prior to the road being built on the section line by Mr. Todd Beam, you only, in and out was through the truck stop.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's truck traffic, right? That's commercial truck traffic?
The commercial truck stop used to belong to my brothers, owned by Flying J, as is that mobile home back there.
Right.
That's owned by Flying J.
Right. That was in and out at the time.
Easement was set up prior to the sale to Flying J, the road easement for those people living back there.
Correct.
The section line, because it was not there at one time, was completed. Again, my brother and my father is part of the land that we used to own. I used to be owned, belonged to Soren Sorenson. I used to help their friend, Duane Bame, was his stepson. Milcows back there in the fifties and sixties. Again, so I know the property, it's a section line. My brother Paul thought it would be best for our family, Bob and Todd, to complete the section line and allow us access to the highway.
And that was after the flood, though?
It's in the flood zone, yes.
No, I mean, after the flood is when that road was built so that you could have better access. Otherwise, it was just kind of a two-lane parade track.
I don't, yeah, I don't recall. Okay, I don't recall if it was built then. It could have been rebuilt after the flood, but my home was destroyed at the flood. I tried a different home in there and built it up.
If the applicant was willing to help out with the road condition and, and put additional gravel and stuff on there to make it a little harder?
No, I, I do not wish to have that property, that zoned commercial. You could pave it, maybe that'd make a difference. But right now, I would prefer not to have it zoned commercial, primarily for the excess traffic. There is a lot of traffic that takes shortcuts through there. People don't live back there, they go through there anyway, just to get out on the other side of the bypass. But this would just increase that traffic.
Okay.
Thank you.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Commissioner Coop, one of the reasons that, when we moved there probably in about two thousand and one or so, there was no road at all. I developed about four hundred feet, paved it, as we talked about. And then further to the west until Paul Beam started removing trees, it was a semi-developed section line road, but you could not traverse it because the trees are all overgrown, okay? So then it got opened up and, and really no development was done, other than, as Todd Beam indicated, he put some, some, some crushed asphalt on it. So it's not really been developed as a true road. And honestly, the, the four hundred feet that I did was developed to township standards. And the rest of it has not been to township standards. There is a culvert further down where you saw the river is, there's places where that, that culvert is not wide enough at this point. And, and I gotta be a little bit blunt. The more traffic, the more accessible you make that road, Commissioner Coop, there are, we have, there are drug deals going on back on that road. And I, the more, the more accessible you make it, the more stuff is gonna go on back there. And I'm not kidding you, I know they're happening. We, we caught a guy pulling a stereo out of a car in our little, one of our little outlots there one time. Well, why do you do a stereo in the middle of nowhere unless you've got some plan to get something out from underneath the dashboard?
Final comments, gentlemen?
Yep.
Yep.
Basically, although you, since you've already denied him before he even came up here and spoke, him saying that there won't be any garbage, will he literally get in the garbage dumpsters and make sure there's not even a grocery bag in there that's gonna blow away? I highly doubt that, because if you prove that, and then all of a sudden he can put dumpsters back there, and all of a sudden garbage is flying everywhere, he's gonna say, well, they approved me, which he will not literally do that. And for him to build a paved road, I know that's gonna cost easily a hundred thousand dollars, because you, it's a one-way traffic road. For a garbage dumpster to come to his property and me or my sons or my uncle Roger to go head-to-head on him, you couldn't even get past him, because the, the widening and the cost of the road, it would be impossible to do, and it, it would be a very wise decision to deny his request. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any final comments from anybody in the public?
I do feel I do need to respond a little bit.
Sure, last comments, then we'll close the public hearing.
Regarding the road going up to the truck stop, we would have no reason to use that road. The only reason we would ever have used that road would be to try and appease Mr. Larson to try and steer away from his pavement, because even though it is a public right of way, and I feel we have displayed that, that we are qualified by the ordinance to be there, it was just to be neighborly, would be the only reason we'd go there. The Beam family or the other members that live down there don't want us on that road. We have no reason to go out of our way to go there. It's actually faster for us to go to the bypass. I live on a gravel road northeast of town. I'd like to be able to stop trucks from coming down it, because it throws dust on my house. But the bottom line is, it's a public roadway. I don't have the right to stop everybody else, because it would be more convenient for me. That's really all I'd add.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to commissioners for a motion.
I have a question for city staff.
Sure.
What are the requirements in C two for any surfacing in that storage space? What kind of materials would be required? And are they existing, or would they need to be added?
And are, what was the last thing?
So where he's wanting to park his roll-offs, what is the surface requirements in that storage space?
Either concrete or asphalt, blacktop.
Are they existing there currently or not?
No.
No.
And the applicant has been made aware he would need to do that? If it's C two, the applicant has been made aware?
Yes.
That he would need to meet that surface requirement, is that correct?
Right, what we discussed, there has to be a principal structure, it has to be paved, has to be screened with a fence, and it has to be landscaped. Those are the fourth, and then stormwater management and, and some other things, but those are the four probably, you know, most costly things to, to pavement, build a building. In C two, you can't have, you can't have storage unless you have a principal building there.
Any other questions for city staff?
One quick comment, commissioners. In conversing with the city attorney, section thirty-five requires a majority of the votes of, of the planning commission, so in order to move this forward, I guess to make a formal recommendation to city council, it would take seven votes to, to approve or deny any action tonight. Anything else, I'll reach out for another motion. If not, it'll go in front of city council with an informal recommendation from this body. Am I close? Reach out for, for opinion.
My many books. Chairman, members of the commission, so the ordinance says that the planning commission approval shall be by a majority vote of its members, and so there's thirteen members on the commission, so it would require a vote of seven to make a recommendation to the council to approve or deny or whatever action that you plan on making here today.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I'll turn, yes, please. Yep, Mr. Coop?
For Mr. Lang. In the beginning, I, did I hear, now he's requesting not to put a building up and, and not to have the actual hard surface, but gravel or, or recycled or whatever, based off the fact that he's not gonna be a sales area or anything, it's just storage, like it is up there by, I guess, the Dutch Mill and, or Fireside and all that and those apartments. So there is a variance that he's already requested for this, or?
No. No, that's why I said earlier, I guess, I don't really wanna speak for him, because I'm not him, but my impression, meeting with him in DRT, when we talked about building the building and doing the hard surfacing, that he didn't want to do that, he didn't feel it was necessary for what he wanted to do with a property. The other thing you need to understand is if, the question is whether this should be zoned C two or not. And we're, we're talking about roll-off boxes and what he would like to do with it, but if it's zoned C two, it's zoned C two, and it can be used for anything allowed in C two by right or by conditional use, you know, if that's what the use is. So, so if he were to decide not to do the roll-off box, it was zoned C two, then anything else that's allowed in C two could conceivably go there if you grant that zoning. And so the standards are for C two are what they are, paving and the building and the landscaping, and to say, well, it's just gonna be roll-off boxes, and it's gonna be, you know, a, a not much development type of development, well, I understand that, but it's C two is C two is C two, right? Understand what I'm, what I'm saying?
So you're saying, the application right now is just before us to rezone to C two. If he would like to store, storage containers or something like that, he'd obviously have to come back for a variance of some sort, correct?
Well, I wouldn't suggest that you zone it C two.
I underst, yeah, yeah.
But, but, yeah, he would have to comply with the requirements to develop it as C two, and if that was something that he did not want to do, yeah, there'd have to be a variance or, would be the only thing I could think of, but that's why I said, there would be, there would be at least a couple of variances. I thought, in my mind, three or four, he was saying just two, but still, you know, at least two variances to try to do what he would like to do with it.
Sure.
I'm just saying that it's not, to get stuck on the roll-off boxes is okay, that's what he's talking about, but if, the, the real question is, is it appropriate for this property in the floodplain with the access and all the issues we're talking about to be zoned C two or not? Because anything allowed in C two could conceivably go on it.
Right. Commissioners, I'll, I'll ask for a motion, please.
I make a motion to hold this item.
Got a motion to hold on the floor?
I'll second that.
Got a second. Any other discussion, commissioners? Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Carpenko?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Larcus?
Yes.
Neither?
Yes.
Wetzler?
Yes.
Barch?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes. Motion to hold is carried. On to the next agenda item. Agenda item number six. This is an application, I apologize, application number five. This is an application by Tim Vallily for a conditional use permit to allow an open sales lot, displayed boats, ATVs and UTVs on lot seventeen sixteen subdivision of out lot twenty-two, section twenty-seven, one fifty-five eighty-three. The property is located at twenty-one twenty-five Elk Drive, and I'll turn it over to city staff for comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a vicinity map that shows the, the property off of the highway, and as most people probably know, there was a tragic fire that occurred there last June, I think it was, and, and pretty much the site is kind of in start-over mode. There is a building, I think, still up there and, and some inventory. But since the time that the Vallilies originally had, had a sales lot up there from whenever it was, back in the seventies or eighties or whatever, the rules are different now, and a conditional use permit is required under the current code for the display of, of automobiles, the outdoor display of automobiles, or boats, or RVs, or that kind of thing. And so that's why this is before you tonight for that conditional use permit. These, of course, are photos of the property before, before the fire. But staff's been working with Mr. Vallily, the owner, to, on the rebuild. This is a, kind of a site plan layout of what's proposed. You can see the landscaping's included here. One of the things that's required with a conditional use permit is, is how the landscaping will be, so the landscaping is shown. Another thing is building elevations, and code requires that any street-facing facade meet certain, I guess, higher standards with, with architectural treatment and, and materials for construction, but Mr. Vallily has decided to go ahead and, and have all four sides of the building meet that higher standard, which is a, which is a great, a great thing. And this is kind of a conceptual rendering of, of what the building would look like from the front side. But there's no boats in the picture, so I guess the inventory isn't there yet, but, but very handsome building and a rendition of the landscaping. I don't know that the landscaping will be exactly like that, but I think it's pretty similar. There'll be landscaping out along the front and a few trees, and then landscaping up around the, the building as well. So, finding is a fact, they need to get a CUP, and they've applied for one. Staff recommendations are to approve the CUP, stormwater management plans, erosion control, and one thing that we've changed and was adopted by council in November with the new landscaping revisions was, all landscape plans that come in now required to have a, an estimate of the cost, and the owner has to put escrow money up in the amount of hundred, a hundred and ten percent, the, the estimate plus ten percent. And the reason for that is to deal with the winter dilemma, you know, when a building is finished and like now, in the middle of winter, it can't be landscaped, just to ensure that it does in fact get done later so that the occupancy could be issued in the winter, and people can move in, occupy the building. We make sure that we, either the owner does follow through and do the landscaping, or if not, then the city would use that escrow money for that. So that's what that last thing's about. So do you have any questions for me? Be glad to answer them.
I do have one quick question, Mr. Lang. Could that ten, or a hundred and ten percent be in the form of a, a bond or letter of credit? Does it have to be in escrow money?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Anything that would be...
Equal to, or?
Yeah, be acceptable to the finance department.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Sean Weeks with Ackerman Esfold, representing the applicant, Vallily Sport and Marine. Good evening, commissioners, I'm Sean Weeks with Ackerman Esfold, representing the applicant, Vallily Sport Marine. And, uh, we're kind of viewing this as somewhat of a bookkeeping exercise. The current zoning is C two, in order to get the uh, property in conformance with the current code, it requires a conditional use permit based on the use that is operating, so. Uh, we concur with staff recommendations. Like to see this approved and move forward.
Any questions for Mr. Weeks? Commissioners? Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll turn it over to commissioners for a motion, please.
Move to approve with staff recommendations.
Got a motion on the floor to approve? And there's a second. Any discussion commissioners? Call the roll, please.
Carpenko?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Larchus?
Yes.
Neither?
Yes.
Wetzler?
Yes.
Barch?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion to approve is carried. The next agenda item, it's agenda item number six. Forgive me. Um, this is an application by Southwest Crossing Partners, Jerome Cookley, for a variance to the paving requirement to allow approximately three hundred, uh, three hundred linear feet of asphalt milling as an interim parking lot surface until permanent paving can be installed on Southwest Crossing Edition Block One Lot Two. This prop, uh, this property is located on the east side of the garages uh, for thirty eight nineteen and thirty eight twenty three Crossing Street Southwest. City staff comments, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a vicinity map that shows the property out, uh, the southwest part of town, uh, off of Thirty Seventh Avenue. And this is a, uh, kind of a site plan that was provided by the applicant. Uh, there is five buildings for apartment buildings that were constructed, I think, beginning in maybe twenty thirteen or something like that, but they, in twenty fifteen, uh, they applied for a final inspection and wanted certificate certificates of occupancy. And the city engineering at that time was in charge of planning as well. Uh, uh, city folks went out and counted spaces and whatnot. And there was only enough parking at that time for certificates of occupancy to be issued for the four buildings that are kind of shown in that, uh, brown color. So the fifth building, that's kind of yellowish, uh, was, uh, not able to get a C O O, but uh, with the, if the parking were to go in, then then they could, so there was a construction season in the fifteen and then sixteen and then seventeen for that to happen. And and it didn't happen for whatever reasons. Uh, in in November of twenty seventeen, the applicant contacted the city and asked if if blacktop is suitable for parking and engineering city asphalt, asphalt paving is is okay. So they moved forward and they paved a few spaces that are shown in, um, kind of the the blue, that general area. I think enough for eleven stalls, which, uh, for some reason they didn't have a full understanding of the amount they needed and they didn't pay quite enough. And by the time they realized that, apparently the asphalt plants were closed, so in the red area, they put down asphalt billings in in a hopes that that would be good enough for the city to issue the certificate of occupancy. Uh, this is just kind of the calculate calculation sheet that engineering did the calc on, and this is a photograph of the the site. Uh, looking, uh, kind of standing on the asphalt, looking towards the billings. You can see that there's really no curb and gutter or defining edge to the to the parking area, there's an unprotected inlet, there's no sidewalks or pedestrian combinations, and there's where there's water standing. Looking the other way towards the asphalt, which is better, but still not in installed to city specs. You can see the, uh, the exposed, uh, unprotected inlet there. And certainly, you know, this situation doesn't live up to to city standards for for paving. Here's the the asphalt area, doesn't have a concrete curb and gutter. Here's the unprotected inlet, and I think you can imagine uh, a lot of material, loose material might end up, uh, washing down in there compared to if it was paved properly. So the applicants asked for a variance to allow the city to keep this the condition that's out there uh, until such time as they can improve it, do the paving uh, the way it should be done, and city staff has concerns because there doesn't seem to be any any target date really, or, uh, and and there's some in the justification for kind of a financial hardship, there's a lot of discussion about how they're concerned about cash flow and how they're going to pay for this and whatnot, and so uh, the city doesn't have a high comfort level with with what it'll actually ever get done. I suppose one thing that could be, uh, you know, asked of the applicant is if if they do have a date and they would be willing to post, uh, uh, a bond in the amount of, I don't know what it costs to pave that, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand, I have no idea, I guess they'd have to have an engineer's estimate, so the city would be comfortable, but if, uh, if they would be willing to post the money and then agree to have the paving done at the end of this construction season, then maybe something like that, but from what we've seen, uh, so far in the application, the way I understand it, you know, we really don't have any of those kinds of assurances, and certainly there there's a lot of issues with this, it doesn't meet city code, so. Uh, the staff recommends denial because there's really no hardship other than the financial issues, which they've had three years to, you know, to 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 deal with this. Uh, work was done, doesn't meet standards, it could have been completed over three years, and there's no really end in sight to this, there's no timeline or completion deadline or anything associated with with the variance request. So that's why we're recommending it be denied. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, commissioners? Is there anybody in the audience who will open the public hearing, and is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of this agenda item?
Sign in?
Please, yes.
Well, it sounds to me like you're more concerned about the, about having a target date when that's, this work could be finished or rectified, as I should say. It, uh, and that would be no problem doing that, I could, I could guarantee it'd be done by probably June fifteenth. I don't know what time the blacktop plants open up in the spring, usually it's due to road restrictions more than anything else. So as soon as that, the weather settles out and whatnot, we could probably get at it immediately and put in a a surface that's going to be acceptable to the city, at least asphalt. So if that'll work for you guys, I don't have a problem with doing that. If you do need a bond, I could do that as well, so.
Well, let me just say, I guess it'd be up to the engineering department, uh, how they'd want that to to happen or if that is acceptable
That.
um, to to finish the the paving to meet city standards.
Commissioner Neither and members of the planning commission, um, I'm sure we could work something out with that, but we have to have the entire parking lot done per city code, so that means the curb and gutter, the landscaping that's required, it can't be a we'll take this but not that, à la carte type of thing, we, we got to make sure that everyone follows the same code consistently, so. Um, that's great, if we can get it paved, that's that's step one, but everything else that comes with it needs to be included in that as well.
So i- is there items that are missing, such as landscaping and and other aspects as well?
Right, so on their complete site plan, you know, the, just like any other parking lot, they have curb around there and and pedestrian access for sidewalks and pavement and the striping and inlets and all that kind of stuff.
So do you be in favor of, uh, if they were to concede and give some sort of consideration of bonding all of those? And the amount of engineering estimates, would you be, uh, acceptable to that?
Mr. Chairman, I guess we haven't done that before.
Sure.
Um, I'm sure we can, just just be aware that we could be setting some precedence there if other projects run into financial hardships and it's a period of time before they're able to complete the work, and then we have a lot of half finished projects around town, I don't, I don't know if we want to go there or not.
Sure. No, thank you for your comments.
And also, um, what what we'd be saying there is a C O O would be issued and it would be in this state for a period of time. Right, if we had the bond and we had the, because that's what they're asking for, is to get a C O O and have this suffice, so are we saying that if that were all worked out, they could move people in, or are we saying not until it's all finished, then they can get the C O O and move people in? I just want to be clear on where we're at here.
Commissioner Neither, essentially what's being requested is is, uh, the equivalent of a temporary certificate of occupancy, the the building, to my knowledge, has met all the building codes, it's been finalized, it's just waiting on the the rest of the site conditions to be compliant with all of the city minot zoning ordinances. Um, if that is the case, then what could happen is some sort of bond be placed. Um, if it's sufficient, then the temporary certificate of occupancy could be granted until such date. And then as long as the improvements would be done, um, the temporary certificate of occupancy could be removed with a full occupancy given. However, um, we have to keep in mind that if they would miss that date, technically, then anybody that's occupying that building would be required to leave, and we don't want to have that, so. That's why these things get a little, they get a little dicey, and I'm concerned that if we go down this path, that could lead to consequences down the road for the city.
Sure. We, uh, have we, have we done any temporary C O Os?
We've done plenty, but typically they're they're for things like landscaping. Um, there might be some some minor punchless type of work left in the in the spring for things, but nothing large scale like this, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Meyer? Yep, go ahead.
We could, uh, we could certainly do any landscaping that needs to be done, but I have to mind you that most of this will probably be torn back up again as soon as the other buildings are constructed. That's why it never got put in originally. So and and we're willing to put in whatever we have to, the, most of the water actually runs away from the street or from that parking area, so I don't think it's going to be an issue as far as as, uh, and we can seed it and do whatever we need to do to make sure it's stabilized. There are some, uh, there's fabric over those structures too, by the way, we put on as soon as she mentioned about, Jackie mentioned about that there was no protection on it. Melody actually did that with, uh, ubiquity, so ubiquity, I guess you call it, uh. And if you have any other questions, I mean, I can make anything work that that you allow me to work, you know, and so the reason it never was done over the three years, though, if you look back at the letter that I sent out, until last fall, we didn't have enough people in there to occupy three buildings. You know, and that was about it, you know, and so, let alone five. You know, and so it was no use spending a hundred and forty five thousand on a street that we couldn't, weren't even going to use. You know, and so now last fall, we finally got enough people in there that we decided we better do something to get some more renters in there to help with the project, you know, and so we have a lot more work coming up there. Uh, I sure hope you guys work with us and we can get all this done, so. If if you don't, we're back to square one. Hate to say it, it's a tough business, you know, and so there have been a lot of hurdles along the way, each one of those becomes a mountain, uh, and financially, you know, and so, and especially if you, I don't know if you've checked with any bankers, you cannot borrow money to do anything in North Dakota right now. It's impossible, I've tried twenty, thirty banks, never worked. So, uh, and I'm not, not complaining about the money, but I am complaining and I'd sure like to at least have the opportunity to fill what we have, so.
Sure.
If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them and.
Any questions, commissioners?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Um, the the occupied buildings right now have the curb and gutter and blacktop and landscaping.
Yes, they do. Landscaping is all in place, it's been a dry year, so some of the trees died off on us, but those will have to be dealt with in the spring, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Just hang tight, there might, there may be. Would it, would anybody else like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this agenda item? Yep, please.
I'm Melody Groniker, I, ubiquity property management and managing the flats. Um, currently, we are full, um, in all the other units in the four buildings. Um, and so, uh, I know one of their concerns was about parking, and so we, you know, collected to see how many, uh, vehicles that we have, and currently, right now, um, that for the spaces that we have, we don't even have enough vehicles that would take up those parking spaces. Um, and then also, I don't know, um, is this still working? Um, if you look on on this side of the street, is that still working? Oh, right in here. I mean.
Oh, she's got.
I mean, uh, you know, for, this is the building that's open, and there's, um, you know, parking along the street there, and this is, you know, not a through street, so I don't feel like it would be, you know, a hindrance to uh, any other surrounding properties as to people parking over there, and that's blacktop. Um, and it got curb and gutter and everything, so it's finished. Uh, so I feel like that, um, you know, we have nothing else to rent there. And this would possibly be another hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of income for the property on an annual basis. Um, so to offer just a temporary, um, variance for us today, we'll to fill up that last building and for them to be able to finish the rest of the property, um, I think would be very helpful.
Sure. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak either in favor? Oh, please come forward.
Say one more thing that, and I mentioned that it's impossible to borrow money or whatever, but things are picking up. We have got some sales that have taken place, and that's what actually generated the money that we put the parking lot in last fall with. And we had that money became available, we spent it on the parking lot. Unfortunately, I didn't know about it and we didn't put in enough, so. And then the weather changed, that was the last day Bechdel was open, and they closed down that day. So we found out too late that it was short of parking, so. The only other other option was to put in the millings, and hopefully we could accept that or whatever. Jackie did complain that she gave us credit for some of the garages that that we had along that route where the millings are, and by putting the millings, then at least people had access to those garages. So, okay?
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Would anybody else in the audience like to speak on behalf of this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners for a motion, please.
Make a motion to deny.
Got a motion to deny on the table? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Hanson. Got a motion and a second, any discussion commissioners? Any discussion, call the roll, please.
Carpenko?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Larchus?
Yes.
Neither?
Yes.
Wetzler?
Yes.
Barch?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion to deny has carried. Onto our next agenda item, this is in the other business, we do have a one item, uh, notice is hereby given that the Minot Planning Commission is holding a public hearing to adopt changes and amending the Minot zoning code of ordinances. And I'll have Lance, um, read the item, please.
Oh, back in twenty sixteen, uh, June of twenty sixteen, when the change to the form of government took place, and we went from fourteen Alderman down to six with the voting mayor. We thought we caught all the changes to, uh, the code that 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 would affect, but we missed one in this section. And it has to do with, uh, with when there's written protests, uh, for, uh, a zone change that, uh, it used to say that that, uh, the council had to require a minimum of eleven affirmative votes. Now, since we've downsized the council, the, uh, correct language would be that, uh, that, uh, the passage of the ordinance on second reading shall require the super majority of the city council. So really just a housekeeping issue to bring that in line with, um, the change to the, to the form of government that we, that the council is has transformed into, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for city staff on this item? Any public comment? We'll open and close the public hearing then, and I'll turn it over to the commission for a motion.
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion commissioners? Call the roll, please.
Carpenko?
Yes.
Coop?
Yes.
Larchus?
Yes.
Neither?
Yes.
Wetzler?
Yes.
Barch?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion to approve has carried. Um, we do have one other item, um, Alderman Wolfski would like to address the commission on some items that he is, he is, uh, working on.
Thank you, Chairman, neither members of the commission, I'll be brief here, it's been a long meeting, this will just take a couple minutes. Um, but I did ask for a couple minutes, uh, tonight because I wanted to bring up a couple issues that I think are are pretty important for Minot as a community overall. Uh, last month at city, city council, I teased the idea that that we need to be conscious of future development, um, especially future outward pushing development. This concept ties directly to the governor's Main Street initiative, in which one of the main principles is focusing on smart, efficient infrastructure. main principles is focusing on smart, efficient infrastructure. And the more we learn about outward expansion, the more we come to realize the economics of that type of development is very difficult to sustain financially. Now, talking about how this community develops and grows is very easy to do, but if we choose to pursue an alternative method, if we choose to implement perhaps different policy that may incentivize different patterns of development, that's going to be a very challenging conversation, especially in a place like North Dakota where we hold property rights as a very, is a very strong value. So if there is merit to some new ideas regarding the way we develop, the way we push outward, maybe we incentivize inward development or redevelopment, then one of the important pieces is to have a very open and transparent conversation about those policies that may push us on that path. So I simply wanted to stand here tonight and let you know that this is a conversation that I have been bringing forward in council. You guys, as the Planning Commission, play a vital role in overseeing and participating in development plans within town. One of the other specific areas that I'm going to be requesting of staff and asking a lot of questions about as we consider future developments is the significant financial considerations in proposed developments, including expected revenues from property taxes, including ongoing maintenance, including the cost to replace roads and infrastructure at some point in the future. And if we don't consider those things on the long-term scale, we may find some of these development alternatives whereby a developer puts in infrastructure and roads and hands them over to the city. And I think the concern and what's been observed in other places, that's a concept that looks very attractive at first blush, but as we get further into the future, the economics of that become very difficult to sustain. So in closing, I appreciate your time here tonight. I do appreciate the work you guys do. I think in many cases, this is a more thankless job than even city council. And I don't, there's no part of me standing up here today that is instructing, or directing, or doing any way, shape, or form to try and influence this. I just wanted you aware of the conversation that I'm going to be asking we all have as a community over the next months, years, who knows? I think this is a challenge for Minot long into the future. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions, or very quickly sit down so we can adjourn.
What are the next steps in your initiative? Is it to form some sort of ad hoc committee, or are we just to sit down at the table and discuss some of these items, or?
So last week, down in Bismarck, was the Governor's Main Street Summit. This is an idea, and there were, I would say, some information that was delivered to us in that forum that is informing this conversation tonight. But tomorrow, at Committee of the Whole, the next steps regarding those of us who are at the Main Street Summit is an agenda item for city council. And I think whatever that next step is, is something for all of us to discuss. I don't have any particular next steps, I just believe firmly that this is a conversation we need to have as a community.
Sure. Any other questions for Mr. Wolfski?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for comments, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think we definitely do need to do a comprehensive plan update at some point in the future, and unfortunately, you know, with budget constraints, everything that, certainly ain't going to happen this year, and I don't know about next year, but it's something that would provide direction to the leaders, decision-makers of the community in terms of policy directions and that kind of thing. Of course, the zoning ordinance and the implementation of that, of those policies. So there could be some, you know, some changes to the zoning ordinance. We've already realized that there's a lot of issues with the zoning ordinance anyway that need to be corrected, but there may be some new directions and things that we would pursue, too, as we move forward with that line of thinking.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioners? With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a motion, second? Anybody?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.